Okay, so I'll call the regular meeting of the planning and zoning commission to order first item is roll call. Nelson here.
I can hear.
This on. Here.
Yeah.
Our members are present. Form. Establish our site in my business as approval of minutes on our previous meetings. I entertain a motion for both one.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of people and.
Well, does there a second?
Second.
Ten second advice. Does anyone have any corrections?
Yeah, just one. Just addition. I also attended the same this sort of. On second.
So the historic. Yeah, I know it's.
Yeah, so you don't like this end.
Well, well, I was just saying that. Well, that could see not a problem.
It was interesting, pleasant.
Yeah. I had. Does anyone else have anything?
No chance.
I just heard a couple of editorial things on on the heading. It says, I assume that our attorney got into the action. Here about right underneath the lower part of the heading part about the following meeting meeting minutes meet all the requirements. And identifies a website address. What happens ten years from now? No, I mean, how long do these things stay in effect?
That's what right now they're they're.
Perpetual they are. But will the website be perpetual?
For me.
I. Sorry.
I can't answer that.
No, that's what I meant, that we should either put an end date on it or or say when if available or something to say it may not be available if somebody looks for it in ten years' time or something.
Oh, okay, well, okay. We'll review it, and this is actually something that the council has been putting up there.
I know.
Minutes and then sort of doing it across the board.
That's fine, I don't mind it, but I just don't want us advertise it when somebody's not going to be able to get to it, or the intent of the town is only to maintain it safe for a year.
All right, well, with language, I just can't make that decision.
No, no, I thought. That's saying I can fix it, but I'm just concerned with that. Maybe you just want to put an annual date on it, or just say within one year's time, or something like that, because it may get expensive to maintain it, or you may not want to maintain it in perpetuity.
Or there might be another platform.
Yes, or another, yeah, but it should be there, I think.
But is there any need? I mean, in the past, we haven't had a transcript available.
Oh, no, I don't care, it's it's removed, but I just don't think we should advertise something that might not be there. If you wanted to just delete it.
Well, it belongs there, because when people look for it, they this way they.
Well, I don't know if they ever looked for it.
I don't know, at this point, you probably put a code on there for the scan, and they keep looking at it, I think. People are looking for these these things now.
Well, I don't mind doing it, but I just want to make sure that it's, you know, it's not going to get us into trouble with advertise something.
Are these the meetings, are these the same ones that are on the town?
Yeah. On YouTube channel.
They are way back.
They do.
Oh, yeah, well, right now, they probably will stay there, but they may not be available in fifty years. But our coffee may be available.
You have to go to the metaverse if you want to live for years. All the perpetuities, so.
Yeah, maybe.
I wonder what that is, what it is, right? You know, you'll live on, you'll think you'll pass away, but you haven't. Metaverse is.
Yeah. No, I know, or we set up electronic records. But indeed, we didn't know how to retain them, so we can figure something out, which might be. Right.
Now it's the opposite, we don't want to get rid of it.
Yes, that may be it, yes.
Orders. Wrong orders.
Okay, so on page. Page two. In the toward the bottom of the page. It talks about John Casey, attorney, who have made some comments. I would think it should we should state that no other comments were received, or something to that effect? Because we're closing the meeting. Or no other submitted or.
It does say right below it. Hearing not an emotion would mean to close the public hearing.
Well. No, from the commission. This is from the. Just to make sure that nobody else was there. Just in case there's an issue. And on page five, under all business, in the last paragraph. It's the last paragraph is for me was a little confusing in that it really, I think, is talking about both zoning regulation. And yet it doesn't really state that it almost implies in that last sentence, there's only one.
Oh, okay.
And I would think there is just as a suggestion, the last sentence is staff will prepare an application should be a separate paragraph. And the staff will prepare applications for both or something like that. Just to clarify. Is anybody ask a question? Issues of how we're processing. How the things will process. Anyone have anything else? If not, then we'll vote on.
Mr. Chairman, oh, yeah, just one more editorial on 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 page one, any news, no.
Oh, for sure. Yep.
Right. So I'll check them.
Could have been possessed, but it wasn't too.
That's first, my next verse. So. So I have any other corrections, if not, we'll vote on the motion to through the minutes as amended, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and abstentions, motion is very unanimous. Next item is public communications, since anyone on the commission, I mean, communications. That are on the agenda. They did. Receive an item for this mystic downtown mystics sustainability project that there's going to be an open house on May second. In the. That is true, if anybody's interested. At that. And we received a copy of a memo that from the town manager regarding cell towers, which I guess have to give us some input on there. And I am sent a letter letter to us because she got bored. Over us.
Was this town manager communication sent to us?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
I think it was just. It really didn't say a lot, it just was trying to define what the the town. They're leaving this. So now.
But we'll talk about that later.
Yes, yeah. And I just. Yeah. As we just have very limited interest. The staff of any anything, do you want to go over that?
Sure, the town manager.
Town manager.
This was a correspondence to a knowing citizen who was concerned about the the cell power that's being proposed in knowing. And it just outlined what the town's rule is and what Connecticut's citing council's role is. So obviously, the citing council as of nineteen ninety six has the authority to approve cell towers. They do have to coordinate and ask for input from the zoning districts where this is located, as well as municipalities, and that's the letter that you saw in your packet last time. And and really, that's that's all this communication was, it was just citing the nineteen ninety six toll communication act that says the town does not have any authority over it, however, they can adopt zoning regulations that they look at when they are reviewing a cell tower application to the citing council in order to make comments.
And zoning is responsible.
Right, in this case, right.
And is the planning, is the planning side cited in that letter at all?
Not at all.
Got it.
Thank you. Does anyone in the public wish to address the commission tonight? Yes, go ahead, if you want to stand up to the podium and give your name and address. Huh? For our public communication, if you want to address the commission.
This is the.
You cannot do it.
Yeah, it could be, yes.
You cannot, yeah, you can't address this once, except at this time.
My name is Bill Branch, G R A N T, I live in New England. And I know freshman lived near the proposed cell tower location. But I thought I'd share some information with you, because I've been studying microwave radiation a little bit here and there for a few years, because the subject came up in Grattan, I forgot why a few years ago. Also, I understand the zoning commission doesn't really have much authority in the matter because of federal law, but I thought I would. Because I've done so much research, I thought I would share this report, I made a report for you. It's sixteen pages, but I just read a few excerpts. And I can give a copy to everyone by email. And because of my past research, I've discovered a few people who have information on the web who are very reliable, so I I picked out this one particular individual, because he is very reliable. Is this Titan?
No, it doesn't. He can pull it out.
Now, he's very reliable, I'll give you a brief history, his name is Barry Trower, T R O W E R. He is a former Royal Navy microwave weapons weapons expert and former Cold War Cold War spy debrief debriefer for MI five in the UK. He was a professor of advanced physics and mathematics and also taught biology, chemistry, and physiology. He has been an expert on microwave technologies and weapons for more than forty years. This report I have here is comprised of three separate. You could say reports, one is a is a a deposition he had to supply to the Oregon State Court, because he was helping a family who wanted to get their daughter away from Wi-Fi in schools, and he was an expert witness. And this is excerpts from his deposition that he submitted to the court, the other one is a talk he gave to doctors in Ireland. And the last one is a talk he gave to citizens in Denmark, so it's very interesting, but I'm just gonna I'll read a couple of excerpts, and if I get too long, just tell me, sit down. During the when I read, oh, by the way, everything I say from now on, not one word comes from me. It's all Mr. Trump. When I realized that similar frequencies and powers that were used as weapons during the Cold War were being used as Wi-Fi in schools, I decided to come out of retirement and travel around the world free of charge and explain exactly what the problem is going to be in the future. During the Cold War, the Russian Embassy Microwave United States Embassy in Moscow was low level microwaves for many years from across the road. Three ambassadors died of cancer and many embassy personnel came down with cancers and other diseases. They were unaware of the radiation. Continuous long term low level microwaves were responsible for those illnesses. Interestingly, the power of the microwaves used by the Russians in some cases was less than the power used by modern day transmitters, cell towers. It should be noted that while professional bodies have noticed the effects of pulse microwaves on the physiology of the body, no experiments have been done to determine the safety levels from the pulse microwaves exhibited by all microwave communication systems, and that no safety levels exist exist for pulse microwave radiation. All mobile communication systems pulse in some way. The problem with young girls is that microwave irradiation has been shown to damage the genetic structure of their ovaries. The problem here is that the mitochondrial DNA, the genes inside the ovaries, is irreparable. One paper written by a professor with the World Health Organization, and he found when women were being deliberately microwaved, the rate of stillbirth miscarriage and genetically damaged children was fifty seven percent. And this was at a level of radiation lower than a child would get in a classroom with twenty Wi-Fi's desktop units. Sixty thousand pediatricians in the US have petitioned Congress to take Wi-Fi out of schools. A D Honey Farms of South Dakota, the largest beekeeping business in the country, lost twenty eight thousand of its seventy thousand hives. That's about one billion bees gone missing. A group of the world's top scientists came to a conclusion called the Petronas Pacino Resolution during a conference in Italy, saying radio frequency sources could be kept far from residential areas. In a nineteen eighty six, in nineteen eighty six, at a top secret conference at the US Weapons Center, a gentleman made a speech, and he said concerning microwaves, quote, "We can change the behavior of cells, tissue, whole organisms, create a six times higher fetus mortality, cause birth defects, and induce cancer in human cells." Regular women are advised never to come into contact with microwaves. There is known, there's no known safety level of microwave irradiation anywhere in the world published for a child. Experts in this field say this can lead to autism and other neurological illnesses in children. You are asking, not you, you are asking neural degenerative damage with your children with Wi-Fi in the classroom. I can assure you, as I as sure as I stand here, the levels of radiation in the classroom exceed those that were used in the Cold War to make people sick. The immune system of a child takes years to complete. You are destroying a child's immune system before it's up and running. All this damage can be avoided by using fiber optic cable or telephone cable instead of Wi-Fi. I was asked to give a talk in Wales to the council on putting up transmitter cell towers in Wales. I drove into Wales and I looked at all the mountains, and I said to the council, whatever you do, do not put up transmitters in the area, there are too many hills. Microwaves will reflect, and it will have a devastating effect on the children. One of the most common effects on children is depression and suicidal tendencies. The industry spokesman said I was talking a lot of rubbish. They put their transmitter's towers up, and they had the biggest suicide rate in Wales ever in their history. When I was in Africa, a teacher spoke after me, and he said childhood suicide and child dad behavior is almost unknown in African children. He said he had a transmitter put up at our school. Within a few years, every single child in his class of thirty was on Ritalin, a behavioral drug, every single child. A study published in two thousand for the Parliaments of New Zealand, Italy, Austria, Ireland, and the European Parliament Parliament in Brussels. The con conclusion of this paper, transmitter tower sites will highly probably increase miscarriage, many cancers, many diseases, significant neurological and cardiac diseases, and death. I had a telephone call from a police officer, and he said some of our officers are developing cancer of the eye. He said, we have a trend, we have our transmitters on our chest. When the officers talk, the transmitting antenna is right by the eye, and they're finding that officers are getting cancer of the eye. There is a paper on this called Scientists Link Eye Cancer to Mobile Phones. When I was in Africa, a gentleman came to me and said, would you come to my fields? I went to his field, and he said, what do you hear, Barry? He said, normally you and I would be shouting to make ourselves heard. And he said, all of these bushes here would now be normally pollinated by bees. He said, since the transmitter went up, I haven't had a single bee come to my fields. He said, he said, I haven't had a single ant. And that confused me for a while, and he said ants are immensely important to us, to us farmers. Ants crawl all all over, crawl over our fruit bushes, and they lick the substance on the leaves, but they don't harm the plants. But if any insects land on the plants to eat to eat the plants, the ants swarm to protect the plants. So the ants keep our plants safe. He said, I've lost my ants and I've lost my bees. I was in a picture of a swan. A transmitter tower was turned on where the swans have a flight path. The swan was trapped in the magnetic field, and all the swan could do is go round and round and round until it died. The people there, they begged the industry to turn the transmitter off before the swan died, and they said no. They said no, because if they did, then the swan flew flew off, it would prove that they were guilty. One moment, they published study on whales, ocean whales, where all sorts of electromagnetic waves are used in the oceans for submarine warfare and all kinds of things. The navigation system of whales, porpoises, dolphins, the like, will suffer. They are beached, they are being beached, and I rang the minister in parliament, my home in England. He said to me, quote, "It's their fault for being in that part of the ocean," unquote. By nineteen seventy one, the US Naval Medical Research Institute referenced two thousand three hundred research articles listing in excess of one hundred and twenty illnesses attributed to radio frequency and non-ionizing microwave radiation. Under the Freedom of Information Act, extracts from published US Defense Intelligence Agency documents confirmed this research and stated, quote, "If the more advanced nations of the West are strict in enforcement of stringent exposure standards, there could be unfavorable effects on industrial output and military functions." Thank you. If anybody would like a copy of this by email, including those that are on Zoom, my email address is bill two W three at gmail dot com, again, that's Bill, B I L L, two W three at gmail dot com. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the commission tonight? And move on to our next agenda items, special permits, but three fifty seven. Elm Grove Cemetery. Very good, sure.
All this. And.
Assuming didn't have anybody.
Okay, there's a, there's a mic over here.
Hello, everybody, I'm James Davis, I'm superintendent of Elm Grove Cemetery. We have a fifty acre parcel and on Offal Wells Road in Duncan, Connecticut. Have we used for, especially use permit that's expiring, let's read out that permanent for the processing. Today, we haven't really done much earth processing. We usually bring bust at the gravel bank. And it's really helped me really last five years. You have a permit for so many thousand square feet to process, and you haven't had the need to do that just yet.
Yeah, I can give you a bit of background, is everyone, everyone knows where this is, Hills Road is here, the old tennis club, okay? So actually, Elm Grove Cemetery Association has had four special permits. The first one was in nineteen eighty two, then two thousand seven, two thousand thirteen, and two thousand and eighteen. The last three were virtually the same in terms of conditions. Anything that's done on the property can only be used for the cemeteries. It's a hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards of material that could be processed. Operating hours, seven thirty to four, no rock crushing, and it can be, it's good for five years, and it can be renewed. In the past, the the renewal date was missed, and that was why a new special permit was required each time. So in this case, they're asking for a renewal of five years within the time period. We haven't had any kind of complaints on the property. And I can answer any other questions.
So I'll open up the commission, any questions, I'll start with you.
Yeah, hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards process, and and you, can you speak to what you use when you do process it, I mean, you use it for any material from graves?
Displacement graves of soil. And then we just bring it to the ground like to have a screen or commit spread between long and drought.
I can. So.
So are there any changes expected within this next five years? So it's same use of who he's the last.
And I we sent out a draft motion, do you have a copy, Jeff?
Yes.
Somebody got turned away, no, didn't prove me.
Uh-oh.
Changed the name.
Elm Grove Cemetery Association?
No. A special review Elm Rotten Cemetery. It's grown.
Oh, right. I think there's a very used type of rotten, you're right.
I can believe.
You're right.
We'll have to change the name of the cemetery, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to renew special permit three fifty seven. Elm Grove Cemetery Association for processing facility for five years. Domain A sixteen, twenty twenty eight. This renewal is subject to the conditions of special permit three fifty seven. Is there a second? Second, spoken second by hell. Does anyone have any concerns with the motion, comments? There are no.
Just a question, do we accept public comment on special permit?
No, we we generally handle them administrative through the commission, if another public hearing is not required.
So this is not.
Okay. Yeah.
We have no, I guess if we had comments from the public, they could have made.
Certainly.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks. So hold on. Well, in the motion to renew the special permit three fifty seven, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any objections? Motion has carried you now.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thanks.
Change. Change.
Or you'd have to change. Then we redo it.
You have to change the special.
Yeah, just I think it's sort of standard.
As well as just use the same.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's just sort of.
If any development ever happens on Wells Road, maybe you want to think about.
No, I mean, that's why. The little thing is by. Oh, I notice he signed it, does one year for the sidewalk. Did you see their ads? It was such a special premise with sidewalks.
Yeah.
So, so actually, when the special permit was granted for Whittle, within the conditions, it said it can be renewed by a new special permit and public hearing.
Oh, that's.
So it specified that.
At the time, we were talking about.
Right. Yeah.
That's why it's in the special permit. That's set up. Okay, next slide on subdivisions. We had a subdivision by two oh two. Subdivisions are a high street extension. It's then. And we're recording the finals. YLRs for ninety days.
Yeah, so this is an extension request on the recording of the final plans for the High Street subdivision. That's a two lot subdivision that we approved. So I have a motion sheet.
So why are they extending the extension?
Just to have more time to review everything. There was easements to review and some other items.
That's not, it's not a new.
No, I just wanted to. That's why I always ask. Thank you.
Sure, gee, the administrative. Okay, sorry, thanks. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve or request. For a ninety day extension for the recording of the final subdivision plans for subdivision from two dash. Oh, two. Zero High Street to audience during the twenty twenty three. Second, and second by state. Anybody have any questions or comments on the motion during non-vote? Vote then on approval of the ninety day extension. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions, motions, third and that is. Okay, next we have is. Flight plans, we have SIT twenty three oh two, Ron Tatters. Addition eight thirty five.
Right, and we have Mike from Summer Hill and Engineers. Mike, can we hear you?
Yes, yes, good evening. Um, for the record, I'm Michael Ott. I'm a licensed professional engineer and land surveyor with Summer Hill. Civil engineers and our offices in Madison, Connecticut. Um, would it be possible to promote Michael Cormier? As a panelist also, in he, in case the commission has questions of him? Is that possible? I believe he's on.
Promoting him now.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Um. Joe Todd from Don Casters is actually in your audience, actually with you. Um. Um. And Joe, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but would, would you like to? Give the commission kind of a brief overview of, of the proposal and then I could, I could take it from there if that's okay?
No, I. He's a lot, so. Um, so the proposal is going to be your stay here name. I am Joseph Todd. I am the project manager for Don Casters Precision Casting, Sarah Brown. My current, my current role and responsibility is always the same, this expansion project. Um, the current expansion project is going to be on the west side of our property. Those familiar with this property, there's a field in the on the west side that we're looking to expand into. Um, the proposed addition is just to upgrade current equipment that is already within our production line. Since we are in the aerospace defense industry. When we get new equipments, this new equipment has to get certified by all of our customers. So therefore we cannot pay and remove our old product or our old equipment. Until the new equipment is certified, therefore we do have to run both of our new, both of these pieces of equipment. So that's why we're requesting this addition because the new, the new place in here. Uh, the expansion is just over nineteen thousand square feet. I believe it's one thirty-five by one forty-five feet. It will house a three robots as well as like a drying line for showing material. Part of our process is a, um, some wax casting that starts the process on this wax casting. Gets dipped into tanks, essentially making it into concrete. And therefore giving a metal flow path into making casting for us. So that's what this new expansion will be housing is that the process of turning the wax essentially into concrete. Um, the reason why it's so big is because the equipment is bears. And there's a dry times that casting site sit. And essentially just going around to dry first.
We have plans.
Um, I, I could share my screen if that's okay?
Yes, please do.
Okay, thank you. And Joe, Joe, sorry, thank you, sorry. Um, can the, can the commission see my screen now?
Yes.
So, um, as Joe said, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna scroll to the right sheet here. Um, and zoom in a bit. This is, um, actually, what, what actually might help is this little key plan. Um. This is the existing Don Casters building, so. Um, Quantic Avenue is. West of this key plan. This is the, the Don Casters site. Is the, is the second parcel in east of Quantic Avenue. Um, if you're, if the commission is familiar with the location. Um. And. This, uh, if you can see my cursor. Uh, this is the existing conditions plan, and this is the westerly side of the existing building. And the lawn area, I'll zoom in a bit. The lawn area that Joe spoke about is here. This is a relatively flat green lawn today with, with nothing in it. Uh, really, there are, there are some trees. There's a landscape bed along the face of the building and there's five or so trees. Um, there is a, an existing stormwater basin that I believe was. Uh, approved in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, by, by your commission. And there's some exhaust equipment. Uh, in the lawn. I apologize for that. I didn't mean to do that. Uh, there is some exhaust equipment here up against the building. Uh, within the lawn. And so other than that. There's nothing else above grade. There are utilities below grade. Um, within the lawn area that that will have to get relocated. And the wet, the wetland, the inland wetland boundary. Is to the south here, this line with the dark triangles. And the blue dash line is one hundred feet offset. From the wetland boundary. So this is the one hundred foot upwind review area from, from the inland oil and boundary. Um, if we go to the, the actual site plan. The gray box, of course, or the gray rectangle almost is, is the proposed addition. It's, I believe it's nineteen thousand. Um, seven hundred and fifty-five square feet to be exact. Um, it's completely within the lawn area. Uh, there is no work proposed, no activity within the one hundred foot upwind review area. Uh, this, this side of the blue line. Uh, sediment control barrier is this dark dashed line, this heavy, heavy line that would, um. Also serve as the limits of work. And, and that, that sediment control barrier is outside of. The one hundred foot upwind review area. Um. I'll, I'll show the commission, um, the architectural drawings, the building plans in a, in a sec, but, um. Um, there are one, two. Three, four doors on, on this new building addition. Um, the only building mounted lighting will be above the doors and those are the. Uh, these dark squares. Uh, those, those lights, of course, are required by the building code. Um, we are reproducing the landscape bed. Um, along the, the, I'm tracing it with my cursor along the perimeter of the building. And it's proposed to be planted with the same tree. Um, type and the same shrub type. That was approved in two thousand and fif- in the, the most recent two thousand fifteen. Um, application that came before the commission. Um. We, as I was saying earlier, there are some utilities in the lawn to relocate. Um, and in addition, we've. Been a bit, uh, we have expanded. This existing stormwater basin, we've made it. Um, ju- just a little bit deeper. Uh, quite a bit larger. And we have directed, um, all of the roof water from the proposed addition. Uh, to this, to this expanded basin. Uh, we submitted, um, design computations for that. That expanded basin, um, that show that we meet, uh, the Connecticut DEP's. Stormwater quality manual requirements for water quality volume. Um. And I. I believe that other than, um, some fire lane. And no parking pavement markings here. That the fire marshal requested as well as some signage. That would indicate, you know, no parking fire lane. Um, I, I believe that's the extent of the, of the proposed improvements. Um. There was some question and Tabitha, correct me if I'm wrong, but. There was some question in our, in our staff meeting. Um, about whether we should provide sidewalks. From each of the four doors to the driveway pavement. And it, it, I read, um. I think it's a proposed motion, if I, if I understood it right, and it sounded like that, um, that we should provide those sidewalks, so we'd be. Be glad to add those to the plan, of course. Um. I, I think, I don't think I've missed anything with regard to site improvements and. Does the commission have any questions at this point? And then I, I can, um, I can show you the building drawings.
Why don't you proceed with your presentation, then we'll have a staff input and then open up the commission for questions.
Okay, um, so I've, um, I've switched to the building drawings. Can the commission see that change?
Yes.
Okay, so. Um. So as Joe said, I believe the outside dimensions are, actually, Mike, do you, is it, is it one thirty-five by one? Uh, if I see, so it's a.
Right, yeah.
Hundred, hundred and forty-five feet in this direction. Is that right, Mike?
Correct, yep.
Um, I'm sorry, for the record, Michael Cormier with, um. Uh, the Pat Munger Construction Co.
Yep, good evening, everyone.
And it's one hundred and thirty-five feet in this direction, and then there is a twenty-five foot by fifteen foot. Um. Uh, this, this bump out on, on the, on the building, on the new building addition. Um, so it's, it's one level, one floor level, one story. Um, and I will, uh, skip to the building elevations. Um. So these are the. Um, sorry, uh, these are the. Um, the, the proposed building elevation. This is the. West elevation that would face. Uh, it would be facing Paquonic Avenue. Um, this is the south elevation that would be facing the inland wetland boundary. That I spoke about. And this is the north elevation that. Uh, if I go back to the site plan, it's kind of a, you know, can't, cannot be seen from, from the driveways. Uh. Uh, let me see if I can switch back so that this would be the north elevation if the commission could see that switch in plans. So this is the north elevation, the west elevation facing Paquonic Avenue. And the south elevation facing the inland wetland. Um. The building is, as you can see, it's pretty, pretty straightforward. Um, you can see the doors that we talked about. Um. It's a sloping roof in, in just a one plane sloping roof in one, one direction. Um, there'll be roof water leaders that will collect all the roof water. To a piping system that we show ours on our site plan. And that piping system directs all the roof water to the, the stormwater basin that I spoke about. Um, the, this is a photograph of the existing. Don Casters sign on the west elevation of the current building. Uh, this is, by the way, that exhaust equipment that I, that I mentioned earlier. Uh, and you can see, you can see the lawn area. That the additional going. So this, if I understand it right, and Joe and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, this, this sign will be removed. And it will be placed on the new west elevation of, uh, of the building addition. Is that, does that make sense?
Yep, that's correct.
So, um. I think that's a, a simple overview of, of the building and, and, uh, and what it will look like and, and, um. Again, be, be glad, unless Joe or Mike. Would like to add anything, be glad to answer any questions the commission would have.
Um, I mean, the only thing I would add is that I think it's noted on those drawings there, but we're using. All the same materials as the existing building as well. It's a metal, metal siding. Um, same color and profile to match what's there now, so. Um, that's about all I have to add.
And the, um, Mike, there's a note on the drawings, I believe, about screening any rooftop mechanical equipment?
Yes, so at, at the time we submitted these, we weren't far enough in our HVAC design to, uh, determine where those units were going to be up on the roof. Um, right now, we're estimating, we're probably going to have, you know, five to six rooftop units. Um, but we had that note on there, you know. Basically stating that we will screen those per zoning requirement, so. And once we get a little bit farther in that design, we can resubmit that for approval as well.
Joe, any, anything to add, Joe?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks. So sure.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of things to add. So the Don Casters addition, this project was received on March twenty eighth. So the sixty-five days will expire on June first. Extensions are still available on this project. As a site plan, this is not a public hearing. Um, the staff summary does go over a number of items particular to this project. I did want to point out that the, um. The note regarding the stormwater basin having invasive pragmities in it. Um, that wasn't mentioned, so just to make a note that, um. Staff found it would benefit from invasions removable in a management plan, and there's some, um, conditions on the motion sheet to that effect. Um, there's two outstanding comments, one from Gotten Utilities regarding. Um, there's two outstanding comments, one from Rotten Utilities regarding. Electrical loads and one from the fire department regarding sprinklering, so he'll have to take another look at that. No waivers are sought, there is a justification for the lack of um internal sidewalks to the site, that's a letter that's been submitted. And the motion sheet is here if you need it.
Can you explain the sidewalks?
The sidewalks?
Well, the first item. On the proposed motion versus the findings seem to.
So the first item on the proposed motion, yeah, I'm sorry, that's a little confusing. The first item is just for the, the major egress, so the egress is from this addition. Um, so that they could have secure egress from that door to pavement.
Just one door?
All four doors.
All four.
Yes, and then the last note is that a sidewalk to the rest of the site, um, larger cir- circulation of sidewalks is. Um, not found to be. Necessary because there's no increased pedestrian activity, and they generally. Walk through the site um inside the buildings.
I mean. You would say that we need, you need, we're thinking about additional sidewalks on the existing building? Is that what this is addressing?
So.
Uh, it says. Sidewalk network. Not currently exist, and there will be no increased pedestrian.
Let me just read the insurance side. So eight point three dash four for internal sidewalks um specifies their. Connection to a fronted sidewalk, so you can require public sidewalks along the site's frontage to connect to buildings and our land uses. On the site by a system of internal sidewalks. Um, and that would be in the, for, the following circumstances. On site, on redeveloped sites that can reasonably accommodate that internal sidewalk. Or on sites where there'll be pedestrian activity from the fronted sidewalk based on the proposed onsite use.
It's just of the frontage. But.
Right.
Wouldn't have people walking in from the street, so.
Correct.
Uh. It's sort of confusing.
Yeah, sorry.
So I'll open up the commission for any questions, um. Or comments, how? It's not a couple. Well, while we're on the, the sidewalk thing, make sure I understand, because right now, I've driven back there. The entrance is on the far side. Great. So, so. If you wanted to walk from the corner. You're just walking in the driveway? That true? There's. That's true, right?
Right, yeah. Yes, that's correct, so if you do come from. Fonic, you would walk down the driveway.
Down the driveway.
And the only employee entrances are on the south side, which is pretty limited to uh visitors and salary personnel. And then there's an employee entrance on the uh east side. Um, because this is a secure facility, all doors are typically locked, so one entry and, you know, entry point into the building.
Oh, one on the south side, that's the visitor.
Correct, visitors and uh inside personnel.
Well, given the scope of how big this place is, I suppose, lived without one so long, but. I remember myself, I'm not keen on forcing people to walk down the driveway. Or saying, oh no, you've got to drive there no matter what, Fonic. Buses that go down to it and. If there's places to walk to from. Actually. In this case, it kind of can't, it's built in to make it less possible. So I'm not quite sure how I feel about that. I'm not completely keen on just skipping the sidewalk entirely. At least some, like, something to get you from. Uh, the visitor entrance. To the rest of the parking lot, at least, you haven't still crossed the whole parking, this thing's. Built to nineteen fifty standard, so no one was thinking anybody walking anywhere. So I'm not really strong about it, but I. I'd like to hear what anyone else really thinks, they have to make a step someplace. Love it if you were the guys who started to step up to this play. Lighting. Is there any sight lighting for this place, like where the lawn is, is that just a dark hole at night?
Uh, there is uh, uh, lighting in the parking lot, like uh towers, um, at doing. Um. The uh, I can punch this name, um. The parking lot here on the south side has uh lighting pictures, as well as lighting pictures, so.
Okay. So they're just big. So I see they're, they're, we're suggesting maybe aim downward, or she tells me they're just sort of.
They're kind of.
Big, big, big floodlights. Exact kind that we hate.
Correct, um, we actually just replaced those lights, um, from the old uh, uh, descent bolts to new L E D ones. Um, so I'll, I will look at that and make sure when we did change those, to make sure that they are down.
But they're L E D, but they're just floodlights, they're not full cutoff. With some kind of focal arrangement inside.
Um, I, I'm not sure on that one, I just know they're just, they're.
I see aimed down, and that tells me I'm taking a big floodlight and making it less bad.
Oh, no, it's a, like, uh, square tubing, and at the top has, you know, the squares at the top.
The squares, okay, so it's quite possible that they were meant to be aimed straight down.
Correct.
Get the optics that they're.
Yes.
So when I see downward, I don't wanna hear, oh great, now it's twenty degrees down. I'm thinking straight down.
Correct.
And if it's, doesn't work for lighting, then you've got the wrong optics inside, but, which is a thing you can buy and fix.
Right.
Because the rest of, right, we're going for a full cutoff, which means nothing on the horizon, but that's our. So as long as that understanding is there for technical, that's, that's what we're looking for here.
Okay.
Um, same with the ones over the doors, it's those, very often. You get. Us regular wall packs, and they forget about this thing about being full cutoff. I'm aware you need a light over the door, you don't need a light directly over the door, you need an amount of light at the door. So there's nothing requiring it to be six inches above the head, it can be anywhere up there, as long as it gets enough light, the cheapest way, I understand. Is just have the lowest wattage, really close. But it should meet the same exact full cutoff standard, there's no reason for it to be the old wall packs that we used to use. Right. From out in the parking lot, you shouldn't, the only thing you should see is the light on the door, not the light. So, I, I don't think we're pretty good. The lights that are there yet. At least I didn't see that in the plans. That's all I got. Hi. Um. The, what is the? The plantings that are around the perimeter of the new building?
Uh, they are, I'll, I'll, I'll share my screen again, I apologize, um. So they are, um. The same plantings that were approved in two thousand fifteen, they are red sunset maple for the trees. And the shrubs are junipers.
Okay.
See the two.
You know, if that was some sort of, uh, at, at first I thought you were gonna be using it for the. For the uh roof runoff, but.
Oh, God.
Everything from the roof is going into the. Uh, the retaining basin?
Yes, uh, there is, um. I will, I will zoom in and show you, so the roof. The roof is, if you can see my cursor, the roof is a constant pitch this way. Uh, to the west, I guess that would be. And there are roofwater leaders, um. Along the building, um. They're hard to see, but there's one right there. There's another one there, and there is a. A pipe. This, this uh very dark line here. That runs the full length of the building. And all the roofwater leaders connect to it. And it goes, as you can see, um, right into the stormwater basin. Uh, there's also from this small fifteen by twenty-five foot bump out in the building. Um, this roof drains in this direction. And you can see the dark piping that also goes to the uh, the basin.
Thank you. Um, the only other, but, what's the cutoff for the E V? Cars and. They don't meet that.
It's a redevelopment pro- project industrial zone that doesn't meet the threshold for E G.
When they ever. It was big enough or something like that.
Right.
And they're, they're not.
Okay, alright. That's fine, then. And are there bicycle requirements? Bicycle racks?
Well.
I'll ask. There's no bicycle.
I mean, I don't remember anything required because of that.
With all the new apartments separate, hopefully they'll maybe, you know, maybe something to be able to use them, usage. I don't need, that could be a technical item, I don't really care, it's not my concern.
Sorry, I can't find it.
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's all. That's, um.
Yeah, yeah, I, um, I drove around the facility, it was quite interesting. My work career, I've been around a lot of factories, so I understand the simple and the efficient. Made sense to me, and I didn't see the side of it. Personally. Was just my take, that was a difficult baby mission. Um, just, um. One question about, you, you appear to have a box within, like, in. Inside of bigger box. So, all the stuff that we show, I'm looking at A J two now, all the stuff showing there is all going through that door? In the building?
Uh, so there is a uh, into the building plans, there is a uh, overhead. That connects our whole building into this new addition. Um, there's a straight shot. Uh, yeah, um, there is a straight shot from uh this doorway to our current addition with a.
Right, but all that is sealed, right?
I'm just thinking. This is, yes, a seal with the uh, all the we put, we'll be coming in through our shipping bay, which is on the east side. Um, getting, getting unloaded, uh, shipping data, and there's actually a dinner walkway and shipping room.
Um, and just from a, I, I heard firefighting being mentioned, um, just from a firefighting standpoint. If, that would be the only way that if. You know, God forbid a fire did break out. Is this place fully sprinklered and, um, so, yes, uh, the way we are booking and designing our sprinklers, so. The boss has been a boss, or right, and um, the only uh manned personnel in the box is this upper area, which we will be adding sprinklers to. As well as the uh exterior. Uh, that we have sprinklers as well. Um, because some of the space in here is, is not large enough to uh be, uh, who we have, who name the space. And then, just, I know basically what you're doing, but you were mentioning uh wax gas and. Various things like that, any hazardous materials involved in any of this?
Uh, we have our permit, um, D E, nothing, uh, except that you don't add it to that.
Up to the exotic, okay, no. This quantity is going up?
Uh, momentarily, while we have two facilities running and while we're doing our uh, um. Certification process, but again, we need our permit through the. Um, and then once we keep our whole, um, our whole.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
So it is a D O D secure facility?
Uh, I saw it.
That's all I had, so, but my understanding of the right car is if there's a fire, you build secure doors. Every, everyone, that becomes also, um, an egress and an ingress. As I understand what I.
Um, for fire, uh, for fire personnel, train, yes, yeah, um, and yes, we do have our emergency, all those will be run access, so.
So I only have, let's see, we have one concern on sidewalks. But I'm still not sure on these exit doors. There are emergency exit doors in my note?
Yes, so the four doors that are shown on the plan here, those are uh, uh, egress only.
But are they emergency?
Emergency, yes, or this.
Yes, it's a picture.
Yes, I apologize, you're right, emergency exit only, no, uh, no, uh, just leaving the building.
They wouldn't be, yeah, so. Those would not have a sidewalk, a paved sidewalk. Will part in the onward driveway. Is that what we're saying?
There's, so there is a concrete pad outside, outside each door. When we met with the fire marshals, he did allude to the fact that fire code might require egress pathways from the door to the pavement.
Door? Yeah, but, but. Some of those doors. Now, go out into the lawn area.
Well, this would, this would create a continuous walkway through that lawn area to the pavement surface, so you would have. From the door to the pavement.
For all, all four doors. And only the ones on the south side.
And I don't have his comments in writing, he said it verbally, so. I just wanna be honest with you.
I'm just trying to make sure that we all understand what we're gonna ask for. You don't wanna have them, not put them on the drawing or put them on in our requirements.
We want them to put them on the drawing.
For all four.
For all, yes.
Okay. If it's a fire.
Yeah.
If it's fired by fire.
Fire. It's fire code, I, I don't have a concern about what is. Yeah, I would say it could be gravel, so, there's some pads where the snow doesn't. You just wanna get people out the door, I don't care. I believe so, you just need the pad, so it's open, it's clear. Yeah, that's all I cared. Uh, I mean, the ones that open up onto a lawn, if. Emergency. No. Well, that, that, their thought is just to, in an emergency, get people out, no matter what. But I want them out of the building. The idea is, once you're out of the building, you're out, so. Closey, closey, clear the door. Reaches.
Uh.
Two ships.
Specifically for this addition, yes, it will be running two ships, um, some of our apartments do run three sometimes.
Lighting is probably. It should be lit, at least that light, but it should be the right kind of light, it's. I figured this. There's not gonna be a, we saw, and. What the. Back to the sidewalks for these emergency door use. We wanna indicate that's as required by. Yeah. By the fire. By the fire code. So if they're not required by the fire code, then we have to put them in.
Correct, and we can strike concrete as well, based on Michael's comment. You can strike concrete as well, based on Michael's comment.
Well. Well. What do you mean? It says fire fans shall depict concrete sidewalks. At a minimum of four feet wide. Will be installed, installed from each of this door to the edge of pavement.
If required.
If, as.
Or as required.
Yeah, I say as. Or. I would say, yes, yeah. If required. By a fire.
Just, once I've had any one time during operation, how many people land this? You need to file, and then you have six. Six total, correct, taking a four doors.
It goes by distance. It's not gonna be assigned to.
I got one door, six.
No, you gotta have a door, which you.
Well, it doesn't look like you can run through the place.
Yes, if you want to have anything else, pressing any other questions or the amount. Or the uh, motion? As the applicant seen the motion.
Yes, I sent it to them earlier today.
They have any. It's clear what it means and. I think it's clear. You have no concerns with it? Those.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, no, no concerns.
So everybody understands the motion, so I guess. And somebody else? Okay, so. Make a ma- motion and for site plan twenty-three oh two. Make a motion to approve site plan. Make a motion to approve site plan number twenty three oh two, eight thirty five aquatic road. With the following modifications. One, final plans shall depict concrete sidewalks at a. Minimum of four feet wide to be installed from each egress door. To the edge of pavement if required by the fire code. Two, the final architectural plan shall depict the screening, the rooftop mechanical equipment. For section eight point one dash seven. Point B. Three, the stormwater basin maintenance schedule shall be expanded to include. Specifics on how. Invasive plant sediment trash and organic debris shall be removed. Four, planning. Planting scheduled for the stormwater basin shall be submitted prior to recording. Final plans. Five, existing parking lot lighting shall be oriented downward. Six, the note shall be placed on the plan that states quote. Any modification to this plan imposed by another federal. State or local agency shall require additional review by town staff. For the commission, whichever is appropriate, and quote. Seven technical items raised by staff. Shall be addressed. Findings for section eight point three dash four, the commission finds an interior sidewalk network. Does not currently exist. And there shall be no increased pedestrian activity. On front of sidewalk. Therefore, an internal sidewalk is not required. For this addition. Is there a second?
Second.
Move in second. Saying that I might, does anyone have any comments or questions? Yes, I think you know, I I.
We, number five. Written to my comments and said, just add on to that, where it says existing parking lot lighting shall be oriented downward. To be full cutoff, which is what we're trying to make them do. Or really achieve it.
Was it second number eight to this?
Yeah, yeah, I would second that.
So we don't have to make.
Yeah, I know. Second, I would second.
Is anyone else have any concerns?
Was was there some discussion about um removing concrete from the sidewalk?
No. Just have a whole statement to this.
I thought Mike had said.
Yeah, I don't care. I wouldn't care what kind.
Yeah, as long as there's. Well, we have the words if required by.
Yeah.
But just whatever is required by the butter.
Okay.
So like a fire.
They just require.
Yes, they're okay with.
Mowed grass. It's no grass. It seems that it's more.
Or grants. All you need is a pad. Any other concerns? Hearing manual vote on the motion to approve the site plan twenty three oh two, all those in favor or say hi. Any opposed? Um, extensions, motion is carried, announced.
We also just thank the elders, the non-attorneys for the continued contribution to the Rotten town. So very grateful.
Yeah.
And it's good to have.
It's good to have.
Yeah, that's right.
Are those six new jobs or are they already?
They are already exist. Yeah, we're just robotic. Like I said, yeah, we're just moving what we currently have and just putting new in this this new edition.
Did that freeze up other space for?
Yes, yeah.
Or potential move processes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Bye bye.
Thanks, Joe.
Looks like well, this those systems work really well.
Which one? This one?
Yeah.
Be a little bit better, yeah.
No, we had problems.
Yeah, it's working better.
Seems like it. Moving on, all business, we have uh Heartland Towers telecommunications. And held over. Last time.
Right, so as we discussed at the last meeting, um, you know, this is a proposed cell tower in the knowing zoning district. Um, you are requiring permission for for knowing. And we wanted to take a bit more time to review the document. I know. Kevin borrowed this the the whole document and read it apparently. Um, so I don't know if you want to further discuss um the talent.
Hmm, if we want, well, all we can do is make comments.
If you have comments.
We're gonna start with this. Well, I'll start. Um, so first of all, I read the document. Well, it's a very large document. The lot of, I'll say, photos in there that are seemingly somewhat redundant, it goes mid-range, low, low-range bands, et cetera. And a lot of photographs, um, but the comments I'm about to say, um, probably need one additional qualification where. How they fit into our our planning comments. Right? Because um. I believe, you know, we should look at it. First of all, when they go through the ecological side. Um, we say you spent a a ton of information on, looks like it fits into a framework that I presume the state of Connecticut has, right? One thing that has no mention of is that the plan of conservation for the town of Groton is not mentioned anywhere inside. So I don't think they ignored it. They felt that because they make, I presume, um, make the um. Their proposal to the state of Connecticut, um, citing council, that they don't, didn't need to do that. And it's an omission as far as I'm concerned. Um, it's, you know, basically they're putting in a town of rotten, why wouldn't they, you know, um, you know, at least cite our plan of conservation? Um, the other piece that maybe we should map in, because of course we want to use the best land use available. Is that within the five, four mile radius for the type of transmission that they're doing, there's nine other cell towers, right? There's nine other cell towers, so. Um, just a little bit of feedback, now it's twenty four and twenty five. Um, part of my work is we won the cellular contracts for Puerto Rico, we did the propagation studies in there. And so what you do, you should pick basically um. In within propagation, a certain radius and say, this is what it's going to serve, right? So in this particular case, they pick in their public statement, um, Ender's Island, they pick, um, knowing. They pick, um, Esker Point, et cetera. Um, GLP is not mentioned within it. And therefore they want to serve those communities better, right? But there's nine towers. So within that same four mile radius. And I find that troubling because all you have to do is put a bigger transmitter on a different tower. If you're truly trying to serve the town of Groton and the state of Connecticut. So the answer is, it doesn't quite make sense to me. The other side, it's a two-part application for this metro, right? One part is, of course, is dish networks and the other side of the date. So what I looked for was what was the penetration, say, for one hundred thousand people, which is typical, whether. Whatever statistic you look at, what's dishes penetration, which I actually couldn't find. But the population that they're trying to serve is less than ten thousand. So what will be the dish penetration in an area that is already being served by cable TV? Everything that they put in their their public statement, it doesn't make any sense for five G or dish. As far as if that is their public statement serving area, I don't get that, right? So if you look at it, um, and not all their um four mile radius studies are focused just on um. Broton and Mystic and go right over to essentially the New London border. Um, also, if you look out on, um, the only place that doesn't have a tower is Fisher's Island, right? And so. The issue is, they've asked something which to me appears. Is of already an over-served community. Um, and I know there's some dead spots in every community, but an over-served community that could be, you know, met with other transmitters. And why are we putting an additional tower? In affecting the acreage, which it is when it's out, right? Is it really for Connecticut? I I think their four mile radius is projected somewhere else and they don't put that in their public statement. I'm just saying by by you, you look at, you know, what they've said, it's set out there. The other thing that's troubling is that um it's going to be seven hundred ninety nine acres as far as the um impact of this. But only little less than four percent of those acres are actually in the town of knowing or Groton. So it really only affects approximately sixty acres. But sixty acres um in that particular dense zone, and you all probably know that it's only much better per um for that zone. Which is again, knowing um is a very significant amount of of um acreage. You know, to basically have a new structure in it. Which is already being served by nine towers that are far away from our Connecticut shoreline. So. You know, the point on it is. I have not mapped my thoughts, I just went through to what our mission is as a planning mission, right? And if we if we seek another thirty days, um, those are the type of comments within. The plant that doesn't recognize the plan of conservation, that it appears it's a redundant process. It's already an over-served community with nine towers in a four mile radius. And does that somehow map into our planning um within the town of Groton? And that's what I do. So I want to say we did the initial research, but are we to take a statement very specific to our mission? I don't know what that would be. As of today. And so.
So you want more time?
So my point is, I don't think I have the tenure capability to map it into um the mission of planning. I would need someone else. You know, I have the techno technological background and say, doesn't make sense, you know, it does.
If you were gonna put a tower. You wouldn't put it there.
I would put it there, um, but not for the reasons they put in a public statement. It's sort of, it's over served, yeah, right? So I I don't understand that. It doesn't make any.
I know that Fisher's Island is a big black hole. And that's.
Yeah, that's it. So what happens, if you look at the four mile radius, it doesn't include all Fisher's Island. It includes actually the western part of Fisher's Island where there are no towers, right? But my understanding is, if you look at the towers beyond the nine that I cite within that four mile radius, there are also New London towers. That potentially could be serving the east side of Fisher's Island. And the west side, I presume, is a an underserved part of the community. And if they're asking for a Connecticut sighting council, make a decision in the state of Connecticut for something on over served, maybe for something else. I find that um. I don't find that um logical.
That's fun because it's a minimum of state.
And that New York state makes a safe, no, put your tower there.
I mean, I think those are legitimate comments to make, just to raise those issues. It doesn't necessarily have to be. You know, the plan of conservation and development says X, Y, and Z, and so thus you have to um move the talent. I mean, I think, I think as a planning commission, you know, who can raise things that don't make sense and 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 use those comments. Um, and forward those comments on.
Yeah, we don't want excessive.
Exactly.
I think that's a point.
Exactly.
Right, and so it's section two, page two, you see exactly where these towers are located. And the answer is none got to the coastline. But they're all removed back from, you know, the water tower in Mystic, over acne wire, um, the quays. Flanders Road, all the the higher areas of Broton where it seemed to be a great landing. Perfect.
Well, the objective is to use it just.
Yeah.
Right, so my point is, why wouldn't you put a transmitter in an existing tower if you feel there's some underserved? Communities, put better technology in it rather than put up a new tower on the coastline. Doesn't make sense. What is the range of these things? It's four. Well, what they look at as far as the propagation or the number of servers. Service within that area is a four mile radius, right? So I presume that radius is is longer than depending on your transmitter, which they don't cite, we cited in private report. You can always increase it. Particularly when you do backhaul, you do in twenty minutes with that, you know, which is between the powers, et cetera.
That actually, when I first started having cell phones. You would have had a cell phone here up on the top of Fort Hill. And starting was Verizon. You would get shipped to a tower in Fisher's Island, you would charge extra for that, because it's on. Right, so I think Fisher's Island does not serve us.
It may, right, but but in this this section that they showed, which is only the western section, they they don't show the eastern section. There was no tower to service, that particular section, that's. And I don't know, tell us eastern section.
Similar. Things about, you know, there appears to be a myriad of different towers that are in the same radius. And I just don't understand. I always try to look at why. You know, why that? And. I'm scratching my head. I don't, I don't see it. Um, I did have a question for staff about are they bound by some of the stuff we went through, like towers within knowing, I mean, within rotten? For fall zones?
Um, so that is a citing council issue. If. If knowing has that in their regulations, then it's certainly something that knowing would um comment on. Um, and they would have to address those comments from knowing.
Okay, are we aware if knowing does have that in there?
Well, can't we just address or just? Cause I think it's a big concern over affecting transportation on.
Yeah. Anything happens, it goes right.
And that's a major.
Yeah. Those are the wires.
Transportation.
Not just the tracks, it goes on wires of the tracks, take down something.
You know, it's very dangerous. Yeah, but even without that. Mess up your uh transit, major transportation system.
Be the same thoughts that we are on Friday.
Really? Oh, yes. That's what I thought, you know, if that bridge were actually shut shut down, you know, actually, they could go back to. Using the old bridge like they used to.
I was thinking as this, as there's burning oil shooting down, one of the structural members, at what point? Well, we're digressing here, but that was melted. The railing, that's twelve hundred degrees. Steel gets soft at eight hundred. So. It had the potential for weakening the bridge, at which point. It could, a section could have come in. Happily, all submarines actually went with the same.
That's all.
Oh, good thing.
They did. All back to power.
Thank you for all that. I can, I can put all that right. I can put essentially all my my writing. Um, the only thing I don't feel I did it, I've done a good job on is mapping it maybe more to the planning.
Sure.
Mo, um, commission mission, right?
Well, I don't think we have to be that specific.
Okay.
I I don't think so. I mean, these are general.
They're general.
Right, okay, then I'm fine.
Yeah.
Um, just give me. You know, we can have till Monday in order for me to submit that. If I have just basically six things, house and it was.
I think that's fine.
Alright, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, I agree with what Kevin was saying, and I think the P L C D is just. It's our basic document. We start from the beginning. It's pretty much a boring, this whole process. Um, and I think it's very important. That people that live in a community and all these different tenants that come across. In a P L C D, it's almost like your rights, you have the resident here. And I don't see them being addressed whatsoever, for example, um. There's a lot of houses in that area, um, let alone the other either. Where. Everybody's looking out there, you know, that's one of the reasons you pay the whatever, um, they're laying their house, a lot of houses in there. And let alone somebody drives there and enjoying it, you know, like it is, you talk to the community. So I think, I think it's very important to remember that, that it, to me, it doesn't comply at all with the P S E D's ways or directions. Um, for how wide and wide it should be. Surely these towers, they're going to be very strict, you know, over lotion. On where they can be with how high and how we're serving. So. If it comes to. You know, the back policy, you have like. Say you have a tower, the waterfront view, no sudden, and sorry, if a house waterfront view, no sudden, the tower, right, maybe, what do you think of those things? It's not gonna be crazy, really. And that's a, it's not a small tower. I also, um. Yeah, I think I mentioned last time, I think the environmental impact, to me, they have really gone into that into great detail. It's not just a question of. It's not just a question of potential fat problem, but it's really all weird species that lived there. Uh, there's also something in the P O C D about areas that are most sensitive. Having sort of problems, very of a potential flooding and problem. It's like right the resident P O C D that. And here they're all cited by a location report, they talk about zoning within a quarter mile of the site. So you have waterfront, commercial, okay. You also have low density residential, moderate density, village residential, village commercial, and our quarters. And we've really got so much residential that was in the eyesight of that. I mean, I think. And just in fact. And just one other thing. Well, they haven't gone into noise standards and other people and so addressing that too. But I didn't understand, I didn't understand the logic of putting up yet. Kevin was saying, we have all these other ones. And you're putting, it's from two companies who've been around a long time. I think we lose every solid provider, segment of the area. And so we've also moved that eighteen thirty, we've had this, I didn't ever understand. The issue of model, because they actually had a fish in their house, you know, like in Kansas fish. And it doesn't seem like the market share.
Right, so if you look at that market, it's declining by additional seven percent by twenty thirty. And it's been in decline of almost thirty percent over the last ten years, huge decline. So what Dish did is they bought out something called Boost in order to do actual cellular transmission. They don't tell at this particular tower, the two functions that they're going to provide, et cetera. But my point is, we're already certified in multiple. Go on and on, let alone, you know, great cable companies, as far as I'm concerned, so. Okay, thanks, take one clarification, it appears at the land area that's affected is only sixty acres. But seven hundred ninety-nine total acres, so if you're on the waterfront, that's where a lot of that.
Well, I think there's also the fact that. But yeah, when there was a list that your top carriers, you know, one of those two are on. Um, so, yeah, those are my things, thanks.
Mike?
I I just would agree with what I'm doing.
You have anything?
I'm just gonna caution about. I'm not, if we couldn't see this thing, this thing, we're just sitting on the site and it's a little lift, took a bunch of electricity, we didn't know what was there, couldn't see it. We wouldn't be having this discussion. It's what it looks like. You know, P O C D doesn't necessarily say and make it look good. So unless if you're going to quote or point to the P O C D, be very careful about what it is you're pointing there. Because, and it doesn't look good, is not one of the things you should have, perhaps, maybe rewrite it. That the make it look good line is something we want to put in there, don't go with views. But it's, you have to kind of stretch what we have in here. In order to make it, the thing we don't like is what it looks like.
But it has, there is some statement in there about being compatible with the area.
Well, talk about.
I would call that compatibility.
Well, okay, then then talk about compatibility. But that's not a view.
No.
When we talk about compatibility. We didn't want to see a glass pyramid in in with all these historic homes, we don't want to see, historic homes in the middle of blast industrial area. That's the compatibility we were talking about. Not saying, not that it's a hundred foot tower.
No, it's a visual incompatible.
It's a visual incompatibility, I suppose, but that's, that's a bit.
Yeah.
I don't care if they built the Eiffel Tower in that, I don't care if they make it architecturally beautiful, it's it's what it does to the view. But it's what, but I'm saying, I I completely agree, it it just, it's not that, it's an ugly tower. I don't even think most, it won't even be that ugly a tower, it's gonna be like, oh.
Yes.
It's the fact that it is a tower in the way of the view. And that's not something we protected necessarily, you probably should. But it's not something we protected in our P O C D very well, except for saying it should be compatible, and I don't know what that means.
There's a lot more, so maybe I'll take this opportunity, I'll write a little summary of how I see it.
As long as it goes right back to what it actually says.
I don't think we want to quote it, I think it's just a generic or concern.
There's a small section on scenic resources. I mean, it doesn't specifically say, don't put any towers.
That's true.
Where you can see it, but it does talk about protecting scenic resources.
Then that might be the best.
Yeah.
That would be the only place we can actually target.
Yeah. But I thankfully, I satisfied. Do you agree that we've sort of identified what are concerns? Basic ones, and maybe you take Kevin's input and then.
As well as Sue.
And then come back to us for our next meeting to have something that's probably the, because we have ninety days, which probably thirty to go on already. But we still have some time, rather than trying to say tonight we'll fix it. We just keep it as a, it's a very high level gym. High level concerns and not specific. That's violated section.
So, yeah, if you guys can get me that bike really next, because the agenda packet will go out in the next Thursday, Friday-ish.
So can I have this for another six days? I'm just saying. I don't know how much contention there is.
For sure, like next Monday, Tuesday.
Moving on, since no business. We have the Spicer Houses now.
Yeah.
A bed and breakfast now.
No, this is an application to modify the existing special permit, they have a proposal to. Change the language of the being owner occupied, they have. They've got a proposal to to share with you about how they will. Um, address any kind of concerns and complaints without having.
But the article paper sounded more like a bed and breakfast, no restaurant, no bar.
Oh, right, right.
Just breakfast.
Everything inside is going to be just for the the people who are staying there, we certainly understand that. But this is just a modification, the existing special.
Right. No, it's just, it's a big change.
Does that require a public hearing?
It will be.
But if they run it like.
That's what they said.
There's nobody there overnight.
Right, be very quiet. Cause that place is.
Yeah, nobody's there at night. Make a room, they say, see you in the morning.
There's nothing, no restaurant. Used to have a bar upstairs. It's not a nice place to actually. That was before. All right, next we have our referrals. We have any other new applications, just. We have referrals. C B A, twenty-three oh-two, single family residence in eight fifty, River Road.
Right, they're asking for a variance from the coastal resource setback, which is fifty feet from the coastal resource, and that includes. Construction of the driveway, um, so they are asking, it's on the other side of River Road, but it's within completed the coastal resource. Um, so they're asking for a variance of that.
Anyone have any concerns? Sorry, got no comment. How can a list is developable when you have to have a waiver? No, if you go on to the, to the G I S and you can see what the land is. There is what the rate in.
That is put on there by the assessor, I I.
No, I I think it's true, but I mean, it really requires a waiver to develop it. Hey, next we have, it's the flash car wash, forty-one oh twelve, Z B A.
If the applicant is asking for a variance, um, uh, they're proposing a car wash on November, uh, month, month over month ago. Um, that would be included for subdivision, two months subdivision of the old. Um, so they're asking at any more variants, uh, or Michael Car Wash. It should be positioned as not to be visible from a public way, um, but the way it's positioned in the lot will be visible. And remember, it's it's, there's, it's it's two two roads, both Connecticut Route twelve and Pleasant Valley, uh, Road South. It can be seen from both roads. Um, so it's it's about how the uh, the access into the building.
Yeah.
So the way that it's positioned, I think it was in this part of the packet, um, it would be visible from Pleasant Valley Road South.
It's just for the entrance.
Just for the entrance, yep.
They're going to be entrance on the pleasant.
Yes, so you come in from Route twelve, so if you remember, they proposed to put the the main entrance. Um, across from the existing light, come in there, you walk around the building and come in the backside.
If that is, goes through. Yes, there's elevation differences in there between. So you're looking down.
You're looking down, yep.
So it's like the awful easy to screen, and then it would be hard to screen or not easy to screen.
Regulation is.
Why do they even care? Why is that regulation there?
It's a visual, and it's a nasty visual, if you've ever seen it, in lesser desirable neighborhoods, instant less desirable neighborhood.
Is that right across from the Pleasant Valley School?
Uh, it's a little bit south, just barely south.
I mean, that's, that would be my own experience that, you know. I I just think, so long as it's screen. There's an acoustics issue, perhaps, but acoustics actually is worse on the exciting side. Well, no, they're gonna have. Rosa back to the cleaners. I'm thinking more along the lines, this is what, a hundred yards from from Pops? Car wash. This north of it.
Yeah. And obviously, they're gonna come back for a site plan with you guys, if this gets up, if this gets moved.
So do we have any concern with this?
I think it can be handled. I think, I I think.
Can move, right, which one you want.
Okay. Moving on, then we have a commission reports reported. Shared. We've mentioned that the mystic. Downtown. Results, the meeting. And I had. Couple of questions. I noticed the Fort Hill Boat Storage Operation. Is back in business. What happens with that, the guy just doesn't pay attention? Enforcement doesn't pay attention.
I'll bring it to Tom's attention again.
Couple, in a month, it will be gone because everybody. I think at least he ought to get another letter.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I had another question, which I don't know is a problem. I notice there's a new driveway that was put in on London Road. Up across. Or hell, it's right next to. To. One right across, right next to nine nine eleven, London Road, Kravitz House.
Oh, okay.
Right to the west of there, somebody took down a stone wall and put a road, a driveway. And I'm not sure which address it is, but there are two lots in there, one has a house on, one doesn't. But both of those houses are addressed to. Woodland.
Right, right, the cul-de-sac.
Yes, so does that guy have the right to just tear down a stone wall, which we wouldn't allow the developer to do?
Let let me look into it, there's definitely a subdivision that was approved for those lots.
I think.
That showed access for those coming off of the cul-de-sac.
Yes, and the assessors.
Right.
Assessor has those addresses to London Road. So I don't know if the guy, doesn't he need his own interment or something?
Yeah, yeah, I I was not aware of any of this, so, yeah, let me.
Well, I didn't think so, because it's not very obvious.
Right.
Took me a while going by, and I says, well, something doesn't look right.
That's a statement.
It is a state. Dealt with the state.
Yeah, but I don't like the idea of taking down the stone wall, because if the stone wall, it goes all along that road. And the access was supposed to be. Across.
Right, so I want to look at the subdivision plan and see what the.
I know we approved something there.
Yep.
But I don't know if it was that way or further to the east. Where we did run into this situation, and we decided we didn't want access on the London Road.
Yep, yeah, let me look into it.
If you could.
Yeah, absolutely.
I didn't know whether.
Access was, if it was one of London Road was always the bottom of the hill. With the old farmhouse.
There's one down there.
And the driveway goes up to number one oh five.
Right.
And I thought it, it would keep going.
If you look at the G I S map for this place, it does show the access driveway on the other side to London Road.
Okay.
But their address in there is on both those lots, it's not in the London Road. So it looks like the guy just went down a third shift and moved some rocks around. It was the earthquake. That's all I had, uh, reporter commission, does anyone on that commission? Reporter staff?
I was gonna mention the Mystic meeting as well, but I think you all got the the mail in today. Four thirty, six thirty, it's an open house situation. I've I've heard again from the work, the ride folks, um, December eight, Connecticut, we want to do a fifteen minute presentation to you. On some pending legislation. Um, I I'm thinking, rather than putting them on an agenda at the end, isn't it be at the end of the evening? Uh, maybe during this special half an hour meeting, six thirty to seven before an upcoming meeting. Would that work for you all, so they can do their fifteen minute presentation, you can ask any questions you want. They can be on their way.
I I do have a little addition to that, I watched that webinar that they had. That was last week ago, Sunday. And it was very interesting, because Heather Summers was on it, and you know, a couple of other representatives. And basically, the, you know, the theme of it was, everything sounds good, but until you get into these details. And the one representative was like, well, how do you know that this is all structured? Um, by developers, and says, well, if you try to contribute to that, it goes to an address in New York. Uh, and, you know, so, there's a lot, the devil's in the details, you know, everything sounds good. You know, it's like, oh, let's have these nice little communities right around invitation stations, but it completely obliterates all. Things related to, you know, our existing zone, what trying to protect, you know, infrastructures and density. You know, parking and everything.
So they may be interested in your feedback, is that right?
Could we request that when they come in, rather than just a generic type presentation? Could we request that when they come in, rather than just a generic type presentation? If you believe that it has impact and brought, we'd love for you to provide what that impact is, rather than us like, try to make that interpretation.
They don't want to just do it in public communication.
Uh, well, and we've got a number of public hearings coming up, so that's my concern.
I can, I find that time.
Well, I find it time accepted, but I also think that, you know, it, it should be. You know, if one, your point is being shared, I think we should hear from the other side also. If there's a counter to that, because that's C T one sixty-nine strong, if they were the people that were sponsoring. This whole thing, and, you know, they have their position.
What is C T one sixty-nine strong?
You can go on their website, and it basically lists all the different bills which are in the market right now. And why. They have a lot of negative impact, because it does remove our authority in a lot of cases. You know, and I don't want to summarize, you know, very, very complex subject. But. They appear to, you know, take these little bites and say, you know, here's a euphemism for making this cute little thing right around a transportation center. But it takes away our authority.
That's the bad.
Yeah, from. From what I listened to.
Okay, well, I will communicate with her and, and see if there's a. Particular meeting we, we're, we're setting up a special meeting, what, half an hour?
Half an hour. And we'd have, they want fifteen minutes, so we have fifteen minutes. For us, we can ask questions or express concerns. Then it would be ever twice. The public, if they haven't.
With regard to Diane's, where do you stand?
I'm going to get you the memo for the next meeting, um, I was on vacation last week, so I didn't have a chance to do it, so, and we'll, and we'll go from there. So you, you take a look at it, does reference an ordinance, um, that has yet to be.
Well, they said they were going to wait.
Exactly, I know you've had a meeting with the mayor, um, so when we look at it next week, um, maybe you can outline what, what your discussion was and what the next steps are.
Well, we just talked about, what was the town manager and the mayor himself. The town manager actually called me. And, uh, the mayor said he would wait until we came up with something and how we want to control, or what we wanted to control. And I thought we sort of reached the decision we want. Allow them only for. A resident, uh, if it's truly a residence.
Exactly, and Jeff Davis took your comments at the last workshop we had and made some, some changes, um, to what you had. So I'll have that for you.
I think if you really read the, what's in our current zoning regulations. They're not allowed, if you were only doing it, say, for a weekend. Because it's obviously not a residence, it's a transit. If you go beyond that, then it's supposed.
That's our interpretation, but if I remember correctly, that was not a legal interpretation by Rock and Seal.
Well, but did he do it? Did he do it because he was ignoring it, or did he do it to make an official decision?
Don't believe it's invited.
I think it was done because the zoning official didn't know how to control it or even see it, because you don't know it. Unless somebody talks to it. And I think it was more. Based on that. But it does say in there, in table four, if you don't have something identified in there, you can't do it. And they do have transit lodging. As something that's, that's controlled. What you call transit, but, uh, obviously a weekend is transit, but if you go beyond that. I don't think it's a competition. No, I'm not playing.
No, no, I'm just saying. We didn't, you didn't know what these things were.
But I, I agree with Jeff, I, I believe we should put that as our forward language. If that's what we believe, that it's in a violation, that's one of the first things we lead with as we pass this forward.
I'm using the state definition of thirty days and. Maybe extensive. But then it's very clear.
So we don't need to, I don't think that Diane's. From what I'm hearing, it sounds like. I mean, it's certainly, it's been a long time.
I think we're pretty close. I think we made the hard decision, really the one decision that's. Difficult, just what we want to control. And I think that is dumb. So it's just. No, but I mean, we, we, I don't think before we had a. Does anyone have anything else, uh, oh? Anything else for staff? Now we have our application and A S P report. On the, uh, A S P report. You have had Molly's Cart Hot Dog thing.
They would, they finally withdrew.
Something with. Yeah, they, because it's hot dog season, now we either do something with it or take it along. On the net force. Is that an A S P or just a zoning? Thought it sounded like you, all you needed was a zoning.
No, no, it is an A S P, because they need to demonstrate on the plan, um, how far away from property lines, you know, that the animal moving and where.
Because looking at the words. Zoning regulations, it sounds you could do it on. I was just surprised to see. I just, I couldn't understand why there's only for the hot dog thing. They put it in. And they're going to have frozen hot dogs. They should have thought.
Just reading the last one, Fire Fest.
It, it, yeah, it's a, it's a fundraiser. Fire department.
Sounds like the lighting thing's on fire, but it's kind of the opposite.
Does anyone have anything else? So everybody wants something.